Okay. Nikki Whitaker?
Yeah.
Motion to move to work session.
Can I have a motion to move into work session?
Second, second.
For favor.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the town board work session for Friday, July 3rd, 2020. It's hard to believe that it was only one week ago that residents in this community were waking up to the news that there was a potential cluster of COVID-19 in our community originating from the Horace Greeley High School graduation and subsequent graduation parties. Since that time, emotions have been running high in our community. Fear, frustration, anger, disappointment, sadness, and confusion, just to name a few. The Newcastle Town Board has heard and absorbed all of these feelings, even as we, as individuals, have been working through our own emotions. Two of our board members attended graduation and are now quarantining along with their families and those at the Horace Greeley class of 2020. When the county executive, George Latimer, came to our town hall on Monday afternoon for briefing on the graduation cluster and the county's contact tracing program, he said to us, "This happened in Chappaqua, and it could have happened anywhere. It's not a mark against this community." He's right, of course. Mistakes were made, big ones, but they were not intentional, and they were not malicious. And now, the challenge that we have as a community is to acknowledge our shortcomings and to find opportunities for growth and improvement. Since the outbreak, the community has been crying out for increased enforcement by the Newcastle Police Department of the Governor's Executive Orders requiring mask-wearing and social distancing. On Monday, our police chief, Jim Carroll, released information on the enforcement mechanisms that are available to the town should residents continue to follow up the governor's orders. Our aim is and continues to be enforcement with the goal of voluntary compliance. We are not looking to issue summonses, write tickets, to collect fines and fees, to generate revenue for the town. What we want, more than anything, is for our residents to do the right thing. Wear your masks, maintain six feet of social distance, and limit gatherings while we're in Phase 3 to 25 or fewer people. But as we have now made clear, both in the chief's communication as well as the town board's official communications this week, if residents continue to flout the rules, we will act, and there will be consequences. And that's why today, we are introducing a local law to require residents to wear face masks at all times and in all places where they are unable to maintain social distancing. We are giving our local police the authority to enforce this law by issuing violations with associated fines. We believe that we are the first municipality in the state to take this action. This is who we are. This could have happened anywhere. The county executive was right about that. But it didn't happen just anywhere. It happened here in Newcastle. We are community leaders, committed to action, and unwilling to accept inaction. We're not perfect, but we must strive to be better and to do better. With that said, I want to turn it over to our deputy town supervisor, Jeremy Slant, who's been absolutely dogged in his pursuit of this issue with regard to clarifying our enforcement mechanisms that are available to us. Jeremy?
Thank you, Ivy. I think in order to regain a sense of normalcy that we all once had and return to that physical and emotional health, that well-being that was a major part of not just this community but beyond, we have to take responsibility for our own actions and be guided by both science and medicine. For the most part, that's what's been happening, certainly in New York State and in this community. And like Ivy said, it's not necessarily a testament as to what's going on here. This could have happened anywhere. But Newcastle is composed of people who are not spectators, we're leaders. And we need to take those steps, and we need to make the provisions and institute the laws that will keep us all safe going forward. There's been a lot of conversation about what we can do, what tools do we have, what has the governor's office allowed us to do, what do the laws consist of? And with conversation with our council from Keenan Bean, with conversation with the county, with conversation with the governor's office, we've decided that yes, we can take certain steps, and we are going to take those steps. This is not a means to just penalize people and be disrespectful to people and be overseeing people. We just want to make sure that we're safe and we're all doing the right things. And if we lead here in Newcastle, it's going to spread, and spread in a good way. It could spread to other municipalities taking the stand, that they need to take action and grow. This isn't Florida. We're not Governor DeSantis. We're not in Alabama having parties so we can get infected. We're taking the steps to do the right thing, to protect our community, to be respectful of our community, to help this entire state and entire nation lead the way and getting rid of this virus that's damaged us all so much. So I thank Supervisor Poole, the town board, Keenan Bean, all of us for figuring out how we can get this done, and I'm confident that we will. It's going to take some time and some effort, but we're moving pretty quickly, and I'm grateful that we have this opportunity to lead.
Thanks, Jeremy. Our town attorney, Nick Ward-Willis, is now going to give us a summary of the legislation that the town board has in front of us this morning.
Great. Thank you, Ivy. Let me first start off with a little bit of a background, and I want to apologize to the board initially, because initially, I've advised the board that you didn't have this authority, that you were preempted by state law from enacting a local ban. And over the last, was it three months now since March 7th, there have been over 47 executive orders issued by Governor Cuomo. There's been a lot of confusion as to what authority do municipalities have, what does the state have, what has the state taken away? For example, the state does require an executive order 202.5 that the town cannot issue a local emergency order unless it gets approval from the Department of Health. Up until three weeks ago, on June 13th, there was a state law that preempted the town from adopting legislation, because there was a state law that banned the wearing of masks in public, and therefore, the state was occupying and regulating the field of masks. That law was repealed by Chapter 98 of the laws of 2020. We've also had discussions with municipal associations, law enforcement officials, DAs, associations, police associations. There's been concern about the lack of enforceability of some of the governor's orders, for example, 202.17, which requires the wearing of a face mask, doesn't have an enforceability mechanism to it. So that's problematic, and that doesn't give the town the authority to regulate it. And there's also a question, is DOH approval required? So we've taken another look at this. We think with the recent enactment of the repealing of the law, that the town does have the authority to regulate and require its residents to wear face masks. So we're confident of the legislation that we're putting forward before you today, that it is permitted, and it's a change from a prior opinion based on a change in circumstances and this ever-evolving line of thinking that we have. So let me now go through what the board has before it. And you have two documents before you this morning. One is a resolution, the other is a local law. The resolution I'm going to go through first, and the town owns property. And I'm not talking about the sidewalks or the streets, but I'm talking about the town parks, the town buildings, the plazas, the smaller areas that are town-owned property. It's your property. You have the ability to regulate it. You've done that so already. You, right, no skateboarding in parks, no smoking in parks. There's clear precedent that you have the ability to decide how people are to conduct themselves when coming onto your property. It's similar to a business saying, "No shirt, no shoes, no mask, no service. You can't come in." So this is very similar. So we have a resolution that requires the wearing of face masks and face covering on public property. If we wanted to have fines associated with that, there would need to be a public hearing to due process, allow people to be heard. However, the law has an enforcement mechanism that says upon the, I'm sorry, the resolution has an enforcement mechanism, that if someone doesn't do what you've asked them to do, they can be asked to remove themselves from your property, and then if they don't file that order, then they'd be charged with disorderly conduct. So the resolution before you, I'm not going to read it in entirety unless you'd like me to. The first couple of whereas clauses talk about the COVID-19, the health emergency, the issues of executive orders. And there says that where is the town board in the Newcastle Recreation, I'm sorry, where's the town board deems it to be in the best interest of the town of Newcastle to adopt additional regulations pertaining to face masks and face covering requirements on town-owned property, including the town's parks, recreational facilities, and municipal buildings. Now, therefore, be it resolved that in order to further protect the public health, safety, and welfare, the town board of the town of Newcastle hereby adopts the following regulation. One, individuals present in or on any town property, including any town park, recreational facility, town building, walkway, or plaza, must wear protective face masks or face coverings which shall be sufficient of sufficient size to cover the nose and mouth of the wearer at all times when unable to maintain or not maintain social distance of six feet. This requirement shall not apply to any child under the age of two or to anyone who is unable to medically tolerate a face covering. Section 2, acceptable face covering, mask or face covering for COVID-19 include but are not limited to cloth-based face coverings and disposable masks that cover both the mouth and nose. Section 3, we have some exceptions. Individuals who are able to maintain a distance of six feet from another person, individuals who reside in the same household, mask shall not be required to be worn by campers pursuant to the interim guidance for childcare and day camp programs during the COVID-19 public health emergency guidance. Individuals playing a sport or participating in a fitness class or recreational activity are not required to wear a face mask if individuals are unable to tolerate a face covering from physical activity. Individuals must put a face mask or face covering on as soon as such physical activity is included. And individuals are not required to wear face masks or face covering when they are eating and drinking while seated. Enforcement, Section 4, the Police Department of the town of Newcastle shall enforce the provision of this resolution. Any person who refuses to wear a face mask or face covering as required herein shall be required to leave town property or other public space. Section 5, this rule shall take effect immediately so upon adoption, and the town will post it. And then be it further resolved that the resolution shall expire upon the adoption of a local law by the town board requiring a use of face masks and face covering to prevent the spread of COVID-19. So that's the resolution, if you like, because it does go in tandem, I can then provide a brief overview of a local law. And so the local law would create a new Chapter 86 of the town code entitled Mask and Face Coverings. Quite frankly, it's labeled that way because it fits alphabetically in the way we have the code organized. Section 86-1 sets forth the findings and purposes. And it's, so today, let me just step back for a moment. Today, the town board is going to introduce this local law. Are you going to adopt a resolution? You're going to introduce the local law. There's going to be a public hearing on the local law. That public hearing will be scheduled for July 14th. Will be an opportunity for the public to comment. The town board will hear and entertain those comments, and then that, or meeting or subsequent meeting, make a decision on the law. So what I'm reading to you, the public will also have an opportunity to review and comment on the local law. So the section, the first section talks about the findings and purposes, why are you adopting this law? Then we have a definition of face masks, which is similar to what I read before, and then the operative clauses. We're regulating face masks in three situations: public property, private property, and then business establishments and compliance with other laws. And then there's a section on exception. So let me read those sections. Section 86-3 is required on public property. All persons shall wear a face mask or face covering which shall be of sufficient size to cover the nose and mouth of the wearer at all times in the town of Newcastle when present in or on any public property or public space, including any town park, recreational facility, town building, walkway, sidewalk, street, or plaza, when unable to maintain a distance of six feet from another person who is not a member of the same household. So that's requiring the face covering on public property. Section 86-4 requires it on private property. All persons shall wear a face mask or face covering which shall be of sufficient size to cover the nose and mouth of the wearer at all times on private property located in the town of Newcastle when unable to maintain a distance of six feet from another person who is not a member of the same household. Next, Section 86-5, face masks or covering required inside all business establishments and compliance with other laws. New York State Executive Order 202.17 requires any individual over age 2 and able to medically tolerate a face covering be required to cover their nose and mouth with a mask or cloth face covering when in a public place. The state has also issued guidance as to when face masks and face coverings must be worn in business, office, and other settings. Failure to wear a face mask or face covering when required by any state or county law, rule, regulation, or guidance, or when so requested either verbally or by the placement of a written sign on the premises by the business owner or building owner shall be a violation of this chapter. So we really have three distinct areas that we covered: public property, private property, business establishments, and wherever else required by law. We have a section on exceptions. Section 86-6, face masks or face coverings shall not be required to be worn by any child under the age of two or by anyone who is unable to medically tolerate face covering. B, face masks or face coverings should not be required to be worn if individuals are able to maintain a distance of six feet from another person. Individuals who reside in the same household should not be required to wear face masks or face covering if located within six feet of each other. C, face masks or face coverings should not be required to be worn by campers pursuant to the interim guidance for childcare and day camp programs during the COVID-19 public health emergency guidance. D, face masks or face coverings should not be required to be worn in settings where it is not feasible to wear face covering. E, drivers traveling alone or with members of their households do not need to wear face covering unless they must lower the windows for any purpose and interact with the public and cannot maintain a distance of six feet. F is the exception regarding playing of sports. G is not required to wear a face mask or face covering when they are eating and/or drinking while seated. H talks about police officers and first responders not having to wear it, except what's required by their regulations. And then we have a section 86-5, a request for exemption. If an applicant believes that circumstances exist that make it a hardship or infeasible to meet the requirements of this chapter, individuals may apply to the town administrator for an exemption. The burden is on the applicant to show hardship or infeasibility. And if the town administrator, his or her sole discretion, determines that wearing a face mask or face covering will result in a hardship or is infeasible for the individual, the town administrator may grant an exemption. And then we have an enforcement provision, 86-6, which should be enforced by the police department, should be guilty of a violation, may be subject to a fine, an amount of $100 for a first violation, and $250 for the second violation. And then effective this, provides that this law may only be enforced during the time that a federal, state, or local state of emergency is declared related to an epidemic or disease outbreak. So those are the two documents before the town board, and I do wish to again emphasize that, you know, the town, we've spoken with people in different regions of the state, and the town of Newcastle is the first that we're aware of in the state to consider adopting a law. We have support from governmental officials, local officials, and organizations who believe that it's appropriate for this type of clarity to be provided to the law enforcement and to the public.
Thank you, Nick, for that summary. I want to give the town board an opportunity now to discuss both the resolution and the proposed local law that are in front of us. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Yeah.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Jason.
It's okay. All right. So, Nick, earlier in your, as you were describing this, you went and you said, "I couldn't quite catch the number." There was either a state law or executive order or something along those lines that was repealed regarding mask, social distancing, and that there was no enforceability?
Sure, two different, yep, two different concepts. The first is that prior to June, up until June 13th, there was a state law that prohibited you from wearing a mask in public. Archaic law, however, it was on the books, and therefore, the state was regulating the wearing of masks. That was repealed and signed into law by the governor on June 13th. It was Chapter 98 of the laws of 2020. The second concept is that when the governor issued the executive order 202.17, which mandated the wearing of a face mask when unable to maintain social distancing, he did not put in enforcement mechanism. In fact, he was clear about it. He expected the public to sort of enforce and tell people, "You got to be wearing a mask." So the police do not have the ability, under that executive order, to, other than to request adherence to the executive order, don't have the ability to fine someone for not wearing a mask. This local law solves that problem.
Got it. So what were, so Chief Carroll, and through our newsletter, had these four different penalties, or again, I don't know what they were, how they, exactly how they would describe. So there were some penalties that were, I guess, enforceable in some way. How does that correspond with what you just said about the no masks allowed repealed June 13th and the executive order to actually wear masks? How does that, that doesn't tie?
Well, correct. So as I said, there's been a lot of confusion and reluctance on law enforcement throughout the state and district attorneys and so offices about how to enforce these laws because there is a lack of clarity. This local law provides clarity. You have the ability to do it. So the provisions that we cited by the chief were disorderly conduct, right? If it's a gathering and you're asked to disperse, you don't, you'd violate the disorderly conduct. There are provisions in the New York State health law that were cited, and those can be relied upon. But without going too deep into it, because I don't want to impact future cases that may come from prosecution, there are also questions as to whether the governor has the authority to issue these executive orders continually, and if instead, there should be legislation. So rather than rely on something that could be subject to a challenge, let's cut through all that. Let's get clarity where clarity is needed. And so what the chief put out in his email is correct, and we stand behind that, but it's not without some people casting doubt upon it. And so we felt it was much better to avoid those potential situations and just interject clarity.
And I would just add to follow up on that, Nick. Nothing would prevent, as my reading of either, any of the statutes, our police to enforce all of these collectively should they be violated. In other words, it's not, they're not mutually exclusive. You don't have to just do one, and you can't do the other. We could do multiple, and if there is a challenge and it's successful to one of them, there's other provisions that could be cited that would be, you know, hold water. So just keep in mind as well.
Thank you.
So what mechanisms do the police have to investigate, investigate issues that come about, right? So someone from the public goes and notifies Newcastle Police Department, whether they've seen it in person, whether they've witnessed it on social media, or what, like, how does this get enforced? Does it, does it require someone from the Newcastle Police Department to actively see a violation as laid out in the resolution and the town law?
Yes, as it is a violation, it does require the officer to have the direct observance of the violation.
And so any other types of physical evidence, whether it be images, social media, the police officer must actually witness, again, I know I'm being somewhat, trying to be clear, they must actually witness it, and social media posts, pictures, and so forth, is not adequate for Newcastle Police Department to issue a violation?
That is my understanding. I do have to defer to the chief and others. I don't practice criminal law, so I couldn't give you a definitive answer on that, but that is my understanding.
Jeremy?
I would add a little piece to that. Yeah, Jason, that's pretty much fair to say for the most part, because think about it as a speeding ticket. If I took a video of not of you, because you adhere to the 55 mile per hour speed limit at all times, I know that, I've seen you driving, I've been recording. I could have turned that recording over to the, look, he was speeding, you know, he was going, you wouldn't be prosecuted for that. You wouldn't get a speeding ticket. The police would have to see it, you know, on their own. So yes, for the most part, that's the way it works. A violation is not a crime, so a violation, there has to be, there can't be that hearsay element, there has to be that observation for the most part, practically speaking.
And residents of the community who, you know, witness what they believe to be, you know, any violations of this local law or of the governor's executive orders with regard to social distancing, are encouraged to call our police desk, which is 238-4422, to report this. And our police will follow up and now have, you know, when we pass this local law, the enforcement mechanism necessary to be able to not only ask people to disperse, but if we are not able to get the voluntary compliance that we are looking for, to be able to issue tickets should we need to. But, you know, that said, I, you know, I want to stress, we're not looking to become a police state here, and we're not looking to, you know, have a nanny culture or a tattletale culture where people are, you know, outing each other on social media and pointing fingers at one another. We're simply looking to be able to give our police the enforcement mechanisms to, you know, ensure that we're really getting to the compliance that we're looking for. And hopefully, people hear about this, and they read about our local law, and, you know, it further incentivizes them to simply do the right thing.
So along those same lines to incentivize people, so obviously, we all know we should be wearing masks for the sake of the community, but for those who need the further incentive to do this, I query whether are the monetary fines that we have in the local law should be increased, because first violation, I think, is only $100. I'm wondering if those should be made a little higher as a further incentive to do the right thing?
I had actually at one point said, I think in an email to Nick or text or something to someone, I think it was Nick, that maybe even up to $250. But the "up to" being the provision, the important word, that a prosecutor in town can make it $100, can make it $20, can make it $50. But I don't object to that. As long as it's an "up to" clause, because we don't want to seem too heavy-handed.
Well, actually, it should be heavy-handed. I think this needs to be done. You have to wear a mask. It's not, it's, that's it. You're not wearing it, you're not wearing it. I think it should be a set amount. It shouldn't be that the police officer, they, "Okay, well, you know what? Your violation's only $20. You're not wearing the mask, it's $250," or whatever.
It doesn't have to work that way. So the way it would be is, once they get the ticket, the law would be the prosecutor and the judge would decide, and then it increases over time. So in other words, if you, the first one is X, and the second one would be multiples of X. So it's almost as if everyone's getting one, relatively speaking, bite of the apple to understand the law. The people have to understand it as they get used to it, as the law comes out, we, you know, when it comes, we don't want to just say, all of a sudden, police stated, everyone bam, people, "I didn't know, I didn't know." And ignorance of the law is no exception, but we have to give some sort of time to people to start adjusting. And for the most part, again, I think the people in the community are compliant, it's just a few who aren't. But I think "up to" was sufficient, because most statutes are that way, you know, even in the penal law and in civil law, most are up to a certain amount, but it escalates. So if they do it again, then you've lost that opportunity, then you get hammered even more.
Great. But there's, we've already had the four things that were brought to the attention by Chief Carroll, about, you know, a criminal misdemeanor, misdemeanor up to $10,000, a violation of health law up to $2,000, $1,000, and disorderly conduct being $250, right? And 15, up to 15 days in jail or something along those lines. So I think our community's been fairly well warned about what the, that there were penalties associated with violating, violating the law during a pandemic. So why is it, why is it that we're okay with such a low penalty? I think people are well, if people are not well aware of it, that's, that's an issue.
Because the law before that we were citing, isn't law actually made for this particular issue? It's kind of pigeon, it's squeezed in to address this issue, but it's not. So for example, you can never get a $10,000 fine if you didn't wear a mask within six feet of each other. That's not, that wasn't applicable for that conduct. So this conduct, the governor's office didn't really address with any enforcement mechanism. So there was nothing to do other than move along for the most part. So that's why, number one, and number two, I think "up to" gives prosecutors discretion to hear someone's situation and what was going on, and you, just to have a strict liability. I think people have the opportunity to be heard. I think I will always have an opportunity to be heard. You know, that person, in fact, was a member of my family. That was, it was my, I mean, who the heck knows? But a prosecutor gets that information and makes a determination. It's not made in the field by a police officer. He or she just gives the summons, and as I said before, I had suggested, it thought about up to $250, and it gives discretion to law enforcement, prosecutor and judges. That routinely is what happens. Everything is up to 15.
And at the end of the day, the judge will set the fine.
Yeah, it's, so it gives the judge that discretion to understand the circumstances surrounding it. Would you treat someone differently if it was a mass of 30 people as opposed to two people who were, you know, next-door neighbors? Yeah, I think so. I mean, certainly, medicine doesn't know any different, science doesn't know any difference, but there's a vast difference if you're callously in a group of 30 people as opposed to, you know, you're talking to your neighbor, you happen to go out to get the mail, and you're talking to your neighbor, and so a cop sees it.
So can we move it to up to 250, then, that being said, instead of up to 100?
I don't object to that.
For the first.
Yeah, and I apologize, we didn't get that change in there. It had been suggested yesterday. So we'll make that change in Section 86, be up to $250. And then, so that's for the first violation and for the second, correct? It's for any violation?
I think we would escalate.
No, I think the second should be more. No, I think the second should be more.
Yeah, we'd escalate it.
Okay, so what do you want for the, you want five hundred for the second?
Up to five hundred for the second, yeah, and thereafter.
Okay.
I think it's hard to put a dollar value on, you know, asking people to do the right thing. I mean, you know, I hear you, Lisa, that a hundred dollars feels, you know, maybe insufficient, but it is hard to try to quantify, you know, what is that threshold at which, you know, people will, will pay attention and take notice of this. We also want to make sure in doing so that we keep it to a level where our officers also feel comfortable handing out multiple of these. You know, you come upon a party, and it's a party of, you know, you know, these, these young adults in our community, we're increasingly seeing it among the young adults, you know, you want to have it at a level where you don't have to, you know, think you're destroying somebody by, you know, a ten thousand dollar violation, you know, and I think maybe two hundred and fifty hits the mark there. It's appropriate balance.
I just had a couple of questions. The face, the definition under face masks and face coverings, there's a note about face shields, so if you have a face shield on but not a face covering, does that qualify, Nick?
That would qualify, yes.
Okay.
And I think that's consistent with the health guidelines that are out there as well.
Okay. And my next question is for families who have, as far as the same household definition, like for families who have au pairs, nannies, babysitters, how is that nuanced in any way, or would you have to apply for an exception with, with the town administrator?
To the extent they're not living in the house and they're coming day by day, they would then have to apply for an exemption and see if that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think a live-in would, would constitute a, a member of the household. It's just the, you know, the daily that I think would be the issue.
Okay, right. Someone commuting every day shouldn't necessarily fall under that exemption.
Right.
One, the last piece on this is, you know, I'm quite confident this will not change anyone's behavior. So I'll just leave that out there, that this, the penalties that we are, we are talking about is, is just not, right? There was, at least with the, with the four, you know, the four penalties that were laid out there, at least there was some, people had some idea that there could be some penalty laid out for them, and they did not care about those much higher penalties. So why should people care about this? I just, I do not have faith that this will modify anyone's behavior, and it, you know, over the course of the last, you know, three and a half, almost four months, and especially over the course of the last, you know, two to three weeks, I think our town's proven that, that it will have no impact.
Wait, 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 let me just catch that, Jason. You think that this legislation will have no impact on people's conduct?
Yes.
I think you are a tremendous cynic if you believe that the, the, we are going to lead the way to make people accountable specifically, specifically for not wearing a mask within six feet, which there was no specific legislation to do anything about it, because I want you to listen to the news and read the news, how often have you heard, other than maybe business entities, getting any type of culpability and responsibility or fines or penalties or sanctions for violating the law. Individuals, you're not seeing it because it's not happening, and we could sit on our proverbial or literal hands and do nothing, but we need to take action, and I think once Bob, Sue, and Tim, and Joan, and whoever it may be, start getting tickets, and that's not our goal, or else not to ticket people like crazy at all, but start getting summons, and they get embarrassed, and they got to go to court, and their two hundred and fifty bucks may not break their bank for the, for their whole life, but it's real, real enough money, they'll change, especially when it's their eighteen and nineteen year old kid who's doing it, and they're saying, now I got to go with you to court, now I, so I disagree. It's going to take a little bit, but I completely, wholeheartedly disagree.
And residents should also understand that what we're saying here today is, not only do residents need to change their behavior, but our police department intends to change the way in which it's enforcing the, the executive orders. So we are now moving from a point of voluntary compliance into stricter enforcement, and this gives us the appropriate mechanisms to be able to do so.
So to Jason's point, though, because I understand what he's saying, and I, for one, am getting a ton of texts from people who are saying, my neighbors have all their high, the high school kids over at their house right now, even now, there's like twenty kids in the backyard all hanging out, because they all went to Greeley graduation, and they think they should all be quarantining together. Is there something we can add? So in that situation, right, if someone called, and I said, well, call the police, but if, if a policeman came over, they technically now, if this law is adopted, could find each, they could summon each of those kids as long as they're under eight, over eighteen, but is there something we want to enforce that says if a, if a parent who should know better willingly allows a large gathering in their house of people not wearing face masks, can they get a stricter fine in addition to everyone who's not wearing the face mask receiving that fine? Because honestly, it's parents who are allowing this to happen at their home, unless they're out, which, where are they going? So, you know, there's not that much to do right now going out. So if, if that's happening, is there a larger fine we can give to parents for having, allowing this at their home?
Again, not my area of law, but I don't believe there is, because the conduct you're being fined for is not wearing a mask, it's not for not requiring someone else to wear a mask, that's the police job to enforce. So I think.
I can actually, and as you're an attorney also, Lisa, I think the way I look at it, it's much easier, sort of from a strict liability perspective, you see someone not wearing a mask, not within six feet, that intent issue is, is not, it's strict liability. Whereas, how do you know the parents knew, what evidence did they knew? Were they home, were they not home? So I think that just becomes much more difficult. That may be something else, a different legislation, but from a strict liability standpoint, right, you're seven feet, you're four feet away and not wearing a mask, doesn't matter why or what you thought or what you wanted to do, or what your knowledge was, you just get, lack of a better term, responsible. So I think it's just much easier that way. It's just a much cleaner, you know, at least for this, for, like, why complicate this legislation by itself? I think your point is right, but why complicate this particular legislation? Maybe that's something different to consider.
Yeah, I'm just thinking more along the lines that I'm not a criminal attorney, I'm a kinder, gentler kind of attorney, but I, you know, if somebody's having a party at their house where they're allowing kids to drink alcohol, they may have greater liability if someone gets in an accident than just the child as well. And so I don't know, that's just a, I didn't know if this is even a possibility, but I'm thinking just as a further way to Jason's point to say, hey, parents, you have to take some culpability in this and, and make sure this is, you're not allowing this at your home, is there anything we can do?
I think it's also situated.
I'm sorry, Nick.
Go ahead. No, Lauren, go ahead, please.
This actually is somewhat related, but on another topic, too, is that I've, you know, and perhaps I'm being presumptuous, but I've seen teenagers in the same car who are clearly not family members, and I don't know if I, if I'm throwing, you know, a monkey wrench in this, but we certainly give tickets to folks who are texting while driving, is there a way to give tickets to folks who are not wearing masks while in the car, the peoples who, with folks that are not members of their household?
Yeah, this covers that.
It does, okay.
It does, yes.
But the police have to see them and pull them over.
Jeremy, you're muted.
Oh, I just, Jason, I love you, I'm sorry no one else heard that. What, what, I, you know, what I thought people have to take into, be aware about is, and I know it's not lost on us, I'm sort of saying this to anyone who watches this, we have a huge geographically sized municipality, about how you use police force. So merely because we see people in a car, we see people on the street talking or whatever it may be in violation, people have understood that we don't have the ability to be out there all the time and nannying it and police hating it. So like you just, I mean, reference to people texting, if the police see it, they can take that step, absolutely. The law covers it, but we just have to be cognizant, we only have so many men and women out there to enforce the law.
I guarantee you that if you stand at the, at the end of the bridge where others who are, you know, who are out there for, for social justice and racial justice, if you just stand on that corner, you will see dozens of people over the course of a couple hours who, who meet the criteria that law and just, just, just raised. So it is flagrant and many.
Then our police will be very busy.
I don't want to push this issue at all, but I unfortunately have to be somewhere, and it is, is there support? I don't want to leave unless there's, you're not going to be supported. Do we think collectively we're supporting this legislation? Does anyone oppose the legislation as it stands? Because if we can take a vote on it, or if I'm not needed for that vote, I just, I have to go to, I have to, I can't stay here, I have to go to New Jersey to see my family.
We're in a position right now where we can go ahead and move forward with the resolutions, understanding that this will, you know, there will be a public hearing at our board meeting on the fourteenth, and we can continue to make adjustments to this as needed.
Thank you.
But Nick, what we're voting on is going to be with the increased fines, though.
Yes.
Correct, it would be, right, there's two votes, one is on the resolution, and then the second is to schedule a public hearing on the local law. As amended, I would just need a vote by the board to amend the local law to reflect the edits you've discussed today, and then a vote on scheduling that hearing.
Could you make it, could you just lead the way and we can so move?
Yep, yep. Okay, so, yeah, so the first is a.
Motion or no, I wasn't sure.
First is a motion to, a motion to amend the local law before the board to reflect the increased fines of up to two hundred and fifty dollars for first violation and up to five hundred for the second violation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next motion is to schedule a public hearing on the proposed local law to create chapter eighty-six of the town code of the town of Newcastle, requiring the use of face masks and face coveries to prevent the spread of COVID-19, for a public hearing at seven PM on July fourteenth at Town Hall, and such meeting will be held virtually, unless it's, the governor does not extend that provision of the executive order, in which case it would then be held in person.
At what time, Nick?
At seven PM.
Is the leak while you're helping that night, too, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last one I have, and I can give two minor other ones before you, this would be a motion to adopt a resolution requiring the wearing of face masks and face coveries on public property, as previously read by the town attorney.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we had a couple, Jeremy, if you need to jump off, feel free to do so, we did have one other thing on our agenda for today.
I'm so moving out of here, thank you, guys.
Have a great weekend, Jeremy.
Take travel.
Sorry, Joe, we actually have two other things on the work session agenda to take.
Right, right, very, very short, sure. One was an authorization to hire an independent contractor for the art center, again, just supporting our, our programs as we are trying to work on an expedited schedule to get our camps up and running. So the first one is for the independent contractor for the art center, Nancy Genomi, to serve as the art camp instructor for the period of January through December twenty twenty, and it's a hundred and sixty dollars per day. The next is a, again, trying to staff our parks in light of this newest COVID-19, we 've imposed additional testing requirements for our staff, they all must take a COVID test, be negative before they start to work, there's been a little bit of turnover in that, and so this newest list reflects some additional staffing that we required. And last but not least is the contract for the portable bathrooms. Evidently, there was a two hundred and fifty dollar fee for transportation of the mobile unit to Amsterdam that actually wasn't included in the total pricing. So it's a revised agenda just to increase the, the price of the quote by two hundred and fifty dollars to five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that's the long and the short of things. So there's three additional resolutions for the board. Does anybody have any questions about those?
I just have one, just a quick question. How, I just don't remember, how often are they cleaning those bathrooms?
Whatever the Department of Health requires, and they're very stringent.
Okay, good, and that company's doing it, we're not doing that?
Yes, yes, no, 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 it's all included in the pricing of it. The Department of Health is very stringent, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, everybody ready to move to resolutions?
Sure. So I move to authorize entering into an independent contractor services agreement with Nancy Genomi to serve as art camp instructor for the period commencing January one twenty twenty and terminating December thirty-one twenty twenty, with an amount of a hundred and sixty dollars per day. This is not to exceed four thousand dollars between the dates of camp July thirteenth through August fourteenth twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to take the next one, or you want me to do it?
Take care of it, Lisa.
I move to authorize the hiring of the individuals listed below for the position of rec attendant within the Rec and Parks Department for the twenty twenty camp season at the following rates listed below, effective June twenty-second twenty twenty. This list supplements the list adopted by resolution on June sixteenth and June twenty-third twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I move to authorize entering into agreement with Call Ahead in Broad Channel, New York, for the rental of portable bathrooms at Amsterdijk Park, I love that name, for the summer camp program in accordance with their quote seventeen one five three fifty-two dash zero and the amount of five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that replaced the prior resolution, by the way.
Correct.
Right, it's in addition to, it's not, it's not replacing, it's just adding to. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, 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 sorry, I was looking at the camera. You're right, you're right.
Okay, that concludes our special meeting here. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.